Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the May 25, 2016 ZBA meeting. Lenny, would you lead the salute to the flag?
Your Honor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And Lenny, would you sit in for Patrick tonight? All right. And Rich, the preamble, please?
Absolutely. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. For the benefit of those who have not attended these hearings, the procedure is as follows. The petitions will be heard in the order that they were posted in the legal notice. However, the chairman may change the order with consent of the board to expedite the public hearing as appropriate. The board will treat all petitioners, their representatives, abutters, and other interested parties fairly and with respect. We allow each petitioner to state why his or her petition should be granted. Following the petitioner's statement, any abutter or interested party is allowed to speak for or against the petition. In the interest of getting all the facts, we will go around a second time. The board may elicit testimony at any point, but we cannot allow any cross discussion. All questions must be directed to the board. Also, we ask that you do not repeat yourself or your neighbor's testimony. If you wish to just indicate concurrence, please do so. After hearing all the facts regarding a petition, the chairman will close the public hearing and the board will deliberate and vote on the petition before moving to the next petition. You can expect fairness and impartiality by this board. The zoning board is empowered to legalize the breaking of the town zoning ordinance, and this is not done lightly. State law and local ordinance set out the criteria that must be met in order for this board to grant your petition. I remind you that it is your responsibility to prove your case so the board has justification for granting the petition. The requirements are listed in the form you receive from the community development office, and it will be helpful if you would proceed on that basis. Please turn off all cell phones and pagers.
Would you swear those in that are going to testify, please?
Okay. For anyone that's going to testify tonight, if you could be sworn in, please, you'd stand up. Hold up your right arm, swear the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth? All right, thank you.
All right, just for your records, if you need to come back next month, the ZBA meeting will be held on June 29. And asking the board, we have a request for a continuance from Richard Elliott, B.R. number four, on the agenda. Does anyone have a problem with that? Could I have a motion, please?
Oh, make a motion, do we allow?
Richard Elliott, oh, thank you. Make a motion, do we allow Richard Elliott to be continued to our next meeting in June?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero, zero?
Four.
Sorry, four, I thought Lynn was here, okay. Is Mr. Kibbie in the audience? We'd like to move you up to the first one. If you'd like to come and sit down at the table and sign in, please.
Are you going to warn them that if it's two-two, they lose?
Okay, and just for your information, since we only have four on the board right now, if it's a two-to-two tie, then you've lost your case. It has to be three-to-two or four-to-one, and I'm expecting another member in, but if you'd like to proceed, we'd be more than glad to hear you, and I'm just going to read your petition into the record. It's Jeff, and it is Kibbie, correct?
Yes.
Jeffrey Kibbie, applicant-owner, requesting a variance under section 2.02.2B3 of the zoning ordinance to permit a vehicle sales, vehicle sales in the C1 limited commercial in Aquifer Conservation Districts. The parcel is located at 407 Daniel Webster Highway, tax map 5D-4, lot 097, in case number 2016-23. And go ahead, sir. Okay, well, you've got to push the buttons, they've got to be bright, bright green. And if you want to pull the mic closer to you, too, please.
Okay. Good evening, my name is James Kibbie, and I'm representing the applicant-owner Jeff Kibbie, my father, who is seeking a variance under section 2.02.2B3 of the zoning ordinance to permit vehicle sales in the C1 limited commercial in Aquifer Conservation Districts. The parcel is located at 407 Daniel Webster Highway, tax map 5D-4, lot 097, case number 2016-23. We seek to establish a vehicle sales business at the subject property. Specifically, the vehicles proposed for sale are limited to off-highway recreational vehicles. The existing custom electric office space would be utilized for the proposed business. The vehicle display area is proposed to occupy, occupy two existing parking spaces, which would still leave enough parking spaces available to satisfy the parking requirements of both businesses located within the C1 portion of the property.
All right, you've basically read this, you want, tell us a little more about it, why you want to do this?
So, section one?
Yeah, you've got, you've got five points of law there?
Okay, yeah, so, section one is granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest. Granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest because it does not alter the essential character of the neighborhood or threaten the health, safety, or general welfare of the public. As seen in figure four, within 524.8 feet of our property, there's an auto dealership, neat auto sales, in addition to 14 other automotive-related businesses within .5 miles south of our property and .9 miles north of our property. Our business, our business will not be performing vehicle repairs, nor will any fuel be stored on the property, see figure five.
Okay, any questions from anyone? I'm going to ask you to stop after every item, so go ahead with two.
Okay. The spirit of the ordinance is observed because the variance does not alter the essential character of locality, nor does it threaten the public's health, safety, or welfare. The spirit of the ordinance for Commercial District C1 is to, quote, "limit commercial uses while buffering residential neighborhoods from disturbance and disruption." Our, our business will not impose any disruptions irregular to this, to the disruptions brought on by similar businesses in the neighborhood of our property, as seen in figure five.
Okay, I have a question for you, you said "our" business, now, are you going to be selling these off-road vehicles, or who's going to be selling them?
The business is going to be run as a partnership between me and my dad.
And how old are you?
I'm 17 years old, but I will be 18 in July.
God, you don't look that bad. Okay, go ahead with number three.
So, number three, granting the variance would do substantial justice because the proposed variance is consistent with the area's present use. The variance would be consistent with the allowances made for other businesses in our vicinity.
Questions, anyone? All right. Go ahead with number four.
Number four, for the following reasons, the values of the surrounding properties will not be diminished. So, A, abutting property number one is owned by the applicant and currently has a commercial business that has been in operation for over 30 years. B, abutting property number five is owned by PSNH/EverSource and is a vacant hillside. C, the existing property, the existing building on the property located at 407 DW Highway will not be modified. And D, proposed hours of operation are normal business hours between 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m.
Questions? Lenny? Question? All right, and number five?
For unnecessary hardship, so owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, denial of the variance would result in unnecessary hardship because no fair or substantial relationship exists between the general public purpose of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to the property because the ordinance is in place to protect well-developed, quote, "attractive residential neighborhoods" that abut commercial properties. No such full neighborhood abuts or is in the general vicinity of the property in reference to the variance request. And part two, the proposed use is a reasonable one because the area has many automotive sales and repair-type businesses, but none that deal with OHRVs specifically. The business will not cause any disruptive competition to any of the existing automotive dealerships in the area because of our separate distinct niche. Our business will be displaying OHRVs in the, in the area noted as figure two in the drawings.
What's your definition of OHRV?
So, OHRV stands for off-highway recreational vehicles, so that counts as snowmobiles, dirt bikes, ATVs, and vehicles of that nature.
All right, and you're going to repair them on the property if need be?
We will not be doing repairs on the property. We'll just be selling them.
Okay, get them at an auction or something like that, bring them back?
Yeah, we get them through various, various means, whether it be consignment, buying it at an auction, or finding it on Craigslist.
Any board member have any questions?
No questions.
I have a question.
Okay, I will now open the public hearing, and is there anyone who would like to testify for this petition? Anyone who'd like to testify against it? All right. If you would just relinquish, relinquish your seats there so we can have. All right, if you would just sign in and state your name for the record?
I did not swear in because I did not know we were, this is the first we heard of the plans at all, other than what was going on, you know, the OHRV stuff and all we did.
Are you an abutter?
My father's an abutter, and I'm here with him.
I own the property next door. We had nothing whatsoever knew anything was going on until I got the letter in the mail. And if I would have been approached on it, I might have had different views on it, but nobody said nothing to me about it. But I also have people living there that have been very good tenants. There is no way that you can put a car lot in there without making a lot of noise for my, the people living next door.
Okay, sir, would you hold on just, just a moment, I've heard you out, okay? At least partially. Would you please sign, sign the paper and state your name, so we will know who you are?
Sir, are you going to?
Are you going to testify?
I wouldn't mind asking a few questions, I don't know if he'd catch them all.
Okay, would you raise your right hand?
Yes.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so hope you got?
Yes, I do.
Okay, and you also have to sign in and state your name, please? All right, would you state your names, please?
I'm Donald L. Lewis, Jr.
All right, and you, sir?
And I'm Donald Senior.
Okay. All right, first of all, let me ask Mr. Kibbie a question.
I'm hard of hearing.
Okay, I'm going to ask Mr. Kibbie a question first, I want to set something, set a precedent. How many vehicles are you going to have on sale at a time? How many vehicles is he going to have for sale at a time? What's the maximum?
So, we have the two parking spaces, and they're going to be OHRVs?
Actually, if you could, if you could just grab the portable microphone that's right over here. Thank you.
So, we don't have a specific number for that as of right now, but we do know that it's, they're only going to fill up the two distinct parking spaces that are shown in figure two.
All right, I, I don't understand, you don't have a specific number, but you've got two parking spaces, I don't understand that.
We anticipate about six at the most at any one time displayed, just either, you know, dirt bikes or a couple snowmobiles, so we've only allowed for two parking spaces as, as noted in the drawings?
Meaning that they wouldn't take up more than two spaces, but there would be multiple vehicles in a space?
Exactly, yes, that's what I meant.
Okay, you, you didn't specify that in your paperwork, did you?
No, we, we identified the parking spaces that would be used.
Right, but you didn't specify how many, up to how many vehicles you'd have for sale at one time?
Right, that was not specifically identified.
So, you're reading your petition and looking at the two parking spaces, I thought you were only going to have two vehicles there.
Well, no, those are vehicles that are, those parking spaces are for a vehicle, a typical vehicle width, if you will, where an OHRV vehicle approximately two to three fit in a parking space, so there would be no more than four to six units.
Now, you're talking, oh, watch, OHRV as in a dirt bike, but not a snowmobile or anything like that, that would, I would think you couldn't put more than two in a parking space.
Yeah, if it, if it were a snowmobile, it would probably be only one, maybe two could fit in a parking space. If it were strictly dirt bikes, then we could fit a maximum of six, otherwise, if it's dirt bikes and ATVs.
Six in one parking space or in both parking?
Six in both, so six in all at one time. And, and that would be if we only had dirt bikes in stock at that time. But because we're most likely going to be having dirt bikes and ATVs and snowmobiles, the snowmobiles and ATVs are going to take up more room, so it would be less than six.
This sounds more like a used car lot than the amount of vehicles you want to sell, but we'll, we'll get to that. Mr. Lewis Senior, if you want to finish speaking now that we know how many vehicles are going to, they want to sell at one time?
Well, first, would you ask them if it's going to be five days a week or seven days a week?
Five or seven days a week.
It'll be normal business hours, Monday through Friday.
Eight hours a day.
No, no, don't address each other, address me.
The proposed business hours are, as we noted in the 8:00 a.m. to 6:00, you know, p.m., Monday through Friday.
So, there'll be absolutely no selling on weekends? Absolutely none?
That, that we do not know at this point. It's based on, you know, how the business goes.
I'm not really sure that we can even address that as the zoning board, that sounds like something the planning board would have to get into.
There aren't regulations for hours of operation.
Okay, so that's not something that we would even base a decision on?
No.
Okay.
Was community development aware of maximum vehicles that they were going to have in those two parking spaces?
It wasn't specifically discussed, but my interpretation would be that if they weren't taking up more than the two spaces with the total number of vehicles, then they're not outside of what they presented to us.
Okay. All right, I'm sorry, Mr. Lewis, continue?
I, I don't know how to approach the whole thing yet, because I wasn't even, like I told you, didn't know nothing about it. But I have some reasonable, good tenants there, the property is kept nice and clean. I don't need people parking in my driveway on my property or pushing snow on my property, and that's what I'm afraid of, it's going to be turned into a small junkyard. I don't like to say that, but that's what I'm afraid it'll turn into, and I don't need that.
May I address the board?
Just a moment, Mr. Lewis is testifying right now. You're all set?
I, I don't, I don't want to make a big deal out of it, but I also don't want to have some people move out because the neighbors decided to do something else. When I moved in there, it was a quiet little place, and I lived there myself for quite a while. It was quiet, didn't have a problem, now I'm afraid I'm going to have problems. And if, if you make this out of a used car lot, like it's quoted, I could have all kinds of problems. I don't need that.
Okay, he's specifically limited to, and correct me if I'm wrong, Gillian, only OHR vehicles, no cars, no trucks, no passenger vehicles.
That should be noted as a condition of it, if the board does decide agreement.
Well, what am I supposed to do if they were?
Excuse me?
If they were parked in there and?
You can't, just, it's the wrong boy.
Okay.
She's all set.
I, I can, I, I understand what you're saying, I, I do. Is there anyone else who wants to testify?
I still have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
Basically, is there going to be a, a full site plan review so we can know how many vehicles he's even approved for there now? I mean, he's got a small electrical business there that when I drive by, I don't know if it's four, eight vans, or whatever, but you're saying he's going to be within his so many, but now you're talking customers that are coming in to look at these OHRVs in and out of a single-lane, turn, driveway-type thing into a bigger parking lot like he has, but it's still, what about any turn, is anybody going to do a traffic study, you know, the site plan review? There's a number of things that a lot of other businesses that try to start up as a automotive or recreational vehicle have to show, where's the oil going, where's, you know, this, this, what he wants to do on two, if it's strictly in writing, two vehicles, two spots only, nothing more, that'd be one thing, but next thing you know, it's not going to be that, and that's what my dad's concerned with, is who is going to enforce it? I mean, I know it's probably code enforcement or whatever, but is this going to be straight out, these two spots, nothing more, you know?
If we approve this, it will be stipulated, just those two spots, with maximum six, say six vehicles, and that's it. Six OHRVs, excuse me.
But you're also taking into the fact that it is now a retail, it's not, it was originally, like he's using it for, is his own workforce coming and going, limited amount of vehicles in and out per day. You're opening it now to a retail operation of?
Well, you know, playing the devil's advocate.
I understand that, but?
No one knows how many vehicles are going to stop there.
But they do do, there's a book somewhere that says straight out that this type of business throws as many cars going in and out.
Can I speak there?
Has anybody even approached that, or?
Yeah, go ahead, Gillian.
Because we have not been told about how it's been done already or not.
This has been administratively reviewed through our office already, and it's been determined that they have enough parking for both businesses, as well as the, the display spaces, to fit the regulations for parking.
You, you just don't know how many vehicles are going to be, you know, stopping to look at these OHRVs, you know, same as you run a business, you can't, you can't estimate how many people unless they have an appointment to come in.
What my father has been told up to now is what he heard here five minutes ago, that's why he, you know, we think that that should have, we should have received something that this is what we want to do, I don't know if the town makes people do that, but, I mean, is that such, I mean, that makes sense to you?
We send out registered letters to the abutters.
Yeah, they, I mean, you would have thought he would have got that, you know?
He didn't get it?
He got a letter saying the meeting's this, tonight, for whatever.
Well, then that was the registered letter, it should have been.
But no, but there was no, this is what's going on, or what they're, you know, that's, that's why we're here asking these questions.
I believe it's just a notification, isn't it, Gillian?
It's just a notification, and if you want more information, you're welcome to stop by our office and get all the related materials.
Did you want to speak? Were you sworn in? Oh, okay. Okay, just a moment, go ahead, Tony.
Yes, sir, when did your father receive the notification? Today?
When my, received the letter?
Yes.
A couple days ago.
Couple days ago.
Probably two days ago. I don't recollect exactly, but I would say about two days ago, and the abutters of my property know me personally, they could have grabbed the phone, talked to me, or asked me to stop in, or anything. I would have gladly done this. I was just over there last week checking on my renters. The renters are paying the taxes and the insurance on that property because the city screwed up the tax money, and I'm paying even more. Now, I've got people paying that tax money, they're good renters, they're keeping the place looking nice, it makes the town look nice, and now, all of a sudden, I'm going to have a mess there. I'm not going to have that.
Okay, what number on the DW Highway are you?
I'm 409.
You're four?
Right, and that's 407 that wants to do this.
All right.
That's all I can say, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're very welcome, sir. Mr. Kibbie, you had something to say?
Yes, I was just going to remind the board that we did notify the abutters within, and follow the rules that were, were established for this variance request. In addition to that, when I purchased the business 10 years ago, I purchased the land, and as you can tell, we've been complimented by many people for the improvements that we've done to that property over the years, I believe it's a substantial investment that I've made in, in the community of Merrimack, been very active, as many of you know, in and around town, so the intent is to continue that trend with this request. So, what, anything we would do would certainly be reflective of the, of the quality improvements that we've made, you know, to date, and the investment that I'm making in the community, to make it a better, better community, both aesthetically and from a business perspective.
I do, I do actually have a question, since we're bringing this up.
All right, can you hold on just a second, Rich?
Okay.
Gillian, do you have a date that the abutters notices were sent out?
They were sent out on Friday, May 13.
Okay, so, they would have gotten them probably by 14th, by May 16, on Monday, registered letters?
I mean, I can't speak to how fast the post office moves, but?
Right, but that would be at 16 through 17.
They were sent out within the legal notification timeline.
Thank you. All right, Rich?
So, my question was on, on point four, when we're going through the five points, I noticed that abutting property number one and number five were actually called out as kind of bullet points in here. What other abutters, and I don't even know, what are those, what are property number one and property number five, are those identified?
Yeah, property number one is, is 407 Daniel Webster Highway, where the, the property requesting the variance, and then property number five is a vacant lot, is a vacant hillside by PSNH/EverSource.
I guess my question is, who's the abutters number two, three, and four? So, where did this, where does this one and five come from? Because I'm looking at here, and all, the only thing that has numbers is the, the sheet that shows all the dealerships in the area, and I imagine Classic Motorsports isn't a direct abutter.
Correct, the, when we fill out the application, we handed in the, the plot plan that had those numbers on there, the figures that we are noting are just pictures that we had taken that were supplemental to the application as well. So, number one is the 407 Daniel Webster Highway lot map. Two would be the DJ Willys, which is now the Merrimack Tax Associates, I believe. Three is the, is that hazardous waste site out behind everyone. Four would be Mr. Lewis's property, and five would be the, the vacant lot across the street, which is the PSNH/EverSource hillside, vacant hillside.
Tony, you have any other questions?
Thank you.
Lenny? Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Previously, you said you don't know if it's going, you're going to use two parking spaces or six parking spaces. Did I hear you correctly?
No, sir, it was two parking spaces that are going to be directly applied, you know, for this business, for the display of, of vehicles that would fit in within those two spaces.
So, you're talking about the vehicles, but not the spaces? I don't know what you're saying.
Right, yes.
Six, six vehicles will fit?
Right, six, right, six dirt bikes within two spaces, or, you know, three within one and zero within another.
Okay, thank you.
What are the approximate measurements on a dirt bike? Lengthwise?
I don't have these specific measurements, but I would, I would estimate around six feet in length and width, no more than a foot and a half to two feet, if you count, if you're looking at the handlebars.
And how about a snowmobile?
A snowmobile would be around 700, so, around 10 feet, 10, eight to 10 feet in length, and then two or three feet wide.
I think they're wider than two feet. If I know my snowmobiles, I know they're wider than two feet.
I'd say three to, three to four feet wide. I'm not really sure about the size of it.
The width of the skis.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, there's different kinds of snowmobiles.
But I couldn't see anyone riding a two-foot-wide snowmobile, you're running about this big.
Yeah, some of the mountain snowmobiles are, are. Yeah, some of the mountain snowmobiles are meant to be thinner, just so they can fit between trees. We're mostly going to be selling trail snowmobiles, but...
Yeah, and you've got to be careful of those trees jumping in front of you.
Exactly.
So, okay. So, is there anyone, yes, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, my name is Diana Lewis. I am power of attorney for my father, Donald Lewis, who is the direct abutter beside this property, and it is a change of use. Currently, it's being used as a very limited commercial for the electricians. Now, it will be full-on retail. Yes, they might have sales Monday through Friday, but you can't stop people on Saturday and Sunday from pulling over on Daniel Webster Highway to look at vehicles. It's going to happen, it has to. That's when people are going to drive by, they're going to see whether it's a skidoo or a mountain bike, get out of their vehicle, there is no parking there. They're going to be parked on Daniel Webster Highway. We, I would like to have a site plan saying where people that are coming to view vehicles are going to be parked at this point, because there is no parking in that property with the use of the electrician's vans and the display vehicles. So, a site plan, I think, is necessary. It is a complete change of use. It's zoned correctly, but it's a change of use. It's not currently for retail sales. Additionally, I would like to have stipulations regarding lighting. If you're selling vehicles, whether they're off-the-road vehicles or automatic vehicles that people would run, you're going to have lighting. You want people to see your vehicle. If that lighting is on till nine o'clock at night, that will inhibit the use of the property abutting it, which is a residential home.
Well, lighting falls under the planning board, if I'm correct.
So, will this be going before the planning board?
This has been administratively reviewed through our office, so it would not go to the planning board unless that was a condition of the approval.
I would like that to be a condition. I think a site plan needs to be done. This is a complete change of use.
Okay, I've been listening to both sides, and I don't want to be the only one talking, but...
The only...
Hear me out, Rich, okay? I have a couple of suggestions. I don't know if either side would be agreeable to it. What about an open and closed sign? Okay? Eight o'clock, that closed sign goes out. And, some sort of sign that if they're going to look at the vehicle, any of the vehicles, to pull into the parking lot and stay off of Route 3 somehow.
Eight o'clock at night? You said it's closed at eight o'clock at night?
Isn't that what you said? Eight o'clock, or eight to six?
Wouldn't it so people on 409 have a chance to go out and enjoy their yard?
What was your, what was, what was your time on that? Eight AM to what?
Normal business hours, eight to six.
Six o'clock, well, six o'clock in the summer, it's bright, bright out anyway.
And Monday through Friday.
But, if they, they had an open and closed sign, they put it up Friday at 6:00 PM, and it wouldn't, the open sign wouldn't go up till Monday at 8:00 AM. But, it would be a closed sign, so...
Can there be no additional lighting?
Do you have plans for lighting?
We do not have any plans at this time for additional lighting.
Just to, you know, interject here, since we're talking about the zoning here, C1 Limited Commercial, according to the Merrimack ordinance, does allow for retail stores, and there's no guidelines on hours or any of that, but retail, like, straight retail's permitted without a variance in this area. The only thing that's not permitted are banks, automotive, hotels, motels, big-box retail stores that specifically are 75,000 square feet or larger. And, where we're talking about automotive, I think that's really the issue here, because we're not talking about car sales. So, it's one of those things where it's debatable, and that's, that's why they're here tonight.
Well, the difficulty is, as you know, these are off-road vehicles, and the way that you try an off-road vehicle is you get on it, and you rev the engine, and you go around the area. That's a very small lot. Where do they intend to have people test drive it? They can't go on the road. An automobile could go on the road. Off-road vehicles cannot. So, that means the aquifer zone behind them is in danger.
May I address the board? There will be no vehicle usage on the property. That is a condition of, as the landlord, of the owner of the property, there is no, that's not allowable. It's a, it's a unit sale only, buy, sell, and consign, unit only. It's not, no one will be riding any vehicles on that, on that property.
Don't, don't get me wrong, but you're going to sell a vehicle to someone that cannot test the vehicle?
There are other areas to bring the vehicles in order to be test-driven, but due to insurance for the property, we can't have them be test-driven on the property.
Okay, so, they would be off, off your property to test drive them?
Yeah, we have ways to transport them.
No, is...
Okay, and that would be conditional on...
Well, that's what they're stating. We can make that a condition.
Make that a condition.
They not be test-driven on the property. Anything else? Gentlemen, go ahead. Lenny?
Clarification. Did you just say the hours were eight to five?
Eight AM to 6:00 PM, normal business hours.
I'm sorry?
Eight AM to 6:00 PM.
Eight to six, as this paper says.
Yep.
I thought I saw five.
I think there was three different times that were given at one point, Lenny. Okay, anything further from the board, or anyone who would like to testify for or against this petition? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. All right, does the board have anything further to discuss?
The only thing that I was going to add was that if, for legal or insurance purposes, they can't test-drive the vehicles, then I guess I don't see how that would necessarily apply that to the automotive-related use, because the assumption with an auto, with a dealership is you test-drive the vehicle. If you can't test-drive the product, then really, it's outdoor retail sales, in which case, you know, like I said before, this is only really kind of on the edge of even needing a variance at this point.
Lenny, anything? Anything to say? Tony? Well, I've made a few suggestions. I hope that maybe the two parties can work something out with that, you know? And, the only thing I can say is good luck on this one. All right, could I hear a motion, please?
So, I'll make the motion to approve Jeffrey Kivvy applicant variance under section 2.02.2B.3 of the zoning ordinance to permit specifically off-road highway vehicles, or off-road vehicles, sales in the C1 Limited Commercial in Aquifer Conservation Districts, parcel located at 407 Daniel Webster Highway, tax map 5D-4, lot 097, case number 2016-23. And, actually, Julian, my question with this is, can we attach to this with site plan approval with the planning board?
If you choose to make that a condition, you can.
Okay, so, I'd like to make that a condition, please.
And also, maximum six vehicles in those two parking spaces.
Well, if they do a site plan, does the, does the planning board take into account that? Or should we add this into the motion?
It would be an item for discussion. It can be a condition of your approval as well.
Okay, so, then, in that case, a condition that no more than six off-road vehicles for sale any given time, and that there is no test-driving occurring on the property.
But, within those two parking spaces.
And, and within those two parking spaces.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Before you, before you accept that, I'd like to make a recommendation that the frontage be posted for no parking along the road.
It's a good idea.
Because tire kickers will stop right beside the road, jump over the stone wall, kick the tires, and I don't think anybody needs that. Would you accept that as a condition? The frontage of the property be posted for no parking?
Can we, I don't even think that, I think we can do that, can't we?
I had mentioned that, that some sort of sign to park in the parking lot, not on the side of the Daniel Webster.
I mean, I agree with you, Lenny, but I don't...
I think we're getting into planning board.
Yeah, those are, those are planning board-type items. Can we make a recommendation to planning board to look at that?
No problem.
Okay, any...
I agree with you.
Yeah, because if you've been by there, there's not that much space there to park. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All against? Okay, it's three to one. Well, Patrick's not here, but you have 30 days before you really can start anything in case something comes up. Okay?
Thank you very much. Do you approve that as noted with the conditions? Is that what...
Yes, with conditions that a, that the planning board basically hear this as well.
And the condition for six vehicles, that six vehicles with the two parking spaces?
Maximum six.
Maximum six vehicles, maximum two parking spaces.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, the next item, and the last item on the agenda tonight is, is it Selco? Is that pronouncing it correctly?
Selco Partnership, yes.
Selco Partnership DBA Verizon Wireless petitioner in Merrimack Village District, the owner, requesting a special exception under section 2.02.1B.3 of the zoning ordinance to allow a telecommunications tower within the R Residential District. The parcel is located off Turkey Hill Road, tax map 5C, lot 004, in case number 2016-21.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, can I ask a question from Julian?
Go ahead.
Julian, I'm water commissioner, and they're going on my property. Do I excuse myself?
It's your decision, but I would probably recommend, I would recommend it, but it's obviously your decision.
Then I will excuse myself from this committee for this one petitioner, because I am a water commissioner in town, and you people are going to be putting your, on the, on my, on the Merrimack Village District. So, I'll be excusing myself. Thank you.
All right, now we're down to three. So, you need a two to one to have...
Is it two to one or all three?
Two to one, ma'am.
I think it's all three.
Yeah, that's, that's to be all three.
Now, I'm going to give you the option of hearing it tonight or continuing it to next month.
May I have a second, please?
Sure.
Thank you. I have a question for the chair. Let's say we go forward today, and the matter is continued for...
Well, you either have to go forward or continue it.
No, no, let's say, let's say the hearing starts, and you don't, you don't reach a decision today. For some reason, it's continued, because you want to continue it for some reason, or you asked for one more question?
No, we would more than likely follow this right through tonight.
You would vote tonight, and there would be no continuing, so I would need three...
But, if we turn you down, you can always come back for a rehearing.
And, the next meeting is, you said...
June...
June 29th?
The next meeting is June 29th. Can I just add that if it is not granted tonight, you would have to request the rehearing at the next meeting, and then, it would need to be heard at a future meeting after that.
Motion for rehearing, yes. Excuse me again, one second. Thank you. Everybody's here, you're here, we'll go forward.
Okay. Sounds good.
Thank you, members of the board. For the record, my name is Victor Minugian. I'm an attorney with the McLean Middleton Professional Association. On behalf of Selco Partnership, doing business as Verizon Wireless, I have with me tonight my colleague Josh Lanetta, who's behind me. He did a lot of the filings, so if there's any questions about the filings, he's here. And I also have with me on my team, starting at the end of the aisle here, is Keith Valente. He's a radio frequency engineer, and he prepared the radio frequency report that was submitted. Next to him is Brian Ross from Structured Consulting Group. He's responsible for locating the site on a real estate basis, lease, and leasing up with the water district on behalf of Verizon Wireless. And, next to him is Mark McCluskey. He's from Hudson Design Group that did the drawings that were submitted to the board. This property's located off Turkey Hill Road, it's map 5C.
Could I interrupt you first?
Sure.
Just for a moment here. You have the points of law here. If you could read those off, and then we'll go into your whole discussion, pictures and everything. How's that?
Gotcha. Okay, so, under...
Special exception.
Special exceptions, 2.02.1B.3A, there's five criteria.
Mm-hmm.
A is the specific site is an appropriate location for such use or uses in terms of overall community, community development. The purpose of your ordinance is to promote health, safety, convenience, and general welfare of the town, and make it attractive for people to live here. Currently, this is a 1.9 acre parcel that houses the large concrete reservoir tank that you know, that's surrounded by a chain-link fence. Our, we believe that placing a wireless communications tower alongside this reservoir enables the residents of Merrimack to use the reservoir as a camouflage in addition to the natural vegetation in that area. And, this will be grouped with the multiple non-residential uses in this residential location, thereby reducing the community impact of this installation. The facility will allow Verizon to provide coverage in this residential zone that's plagued by erratic wireless service, which will help increase the safety convenience for your public police and fire, as well as the general welfare by giving the Merrimack residents and visitors a better and stable wireless network to use their phones and laptops, iPhones. Everybody is using their data on a high level right now, and we're trying to fill the gaps that, there's gaps in coverage in this area. B is the use as developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood and shall produce no diminution of value in real estate in the neighboring area. We've stated that it won't diminish...
Excuse me, if you just read what you have there, and then you can go into it after we go through the points here. Just, just read this here.
Read the standards, or...
Yeah, just the standards, like, there will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles, et cetera.
Okay.
And this way here, you can quickly get to your presentation.
Okay. The use as developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood and shall produce no diminution of real estate in the neighboring area. There'll be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians. That adequate parking area is provided for more motor vehicles on the premises, and a buffer shall be erected and maintained to screen existing residential uses. Buffers may be fence screens, dense plantings of suitable trees and shrubbery, or naturally occurring shrubs and trees.
Okay, I'm going to stop you after each item, in case anyone has any questions. But, I do, and I'm just curious, how much land do you need to put up a cell tower?
We need normally a 50 by 50 fenced-in area.
No, that's not a lot, really.
It's not a lot. It's not a lot. And sometimes we lease up larger than that, but the fenced-in compound is always much smaller. And basically, aside from that, within that area, there's a ten by twelve concrete ad. Prior to January 1st, we used to have large twelve by twenty-six buildings that came pre-fat. The technology changed, and we've had, we have smaller slab foundations now, and we have stand-up cabinets and backup generators that just stand there.
Changed a lot in the last couple of years, several years.
It's getting, it's getting a lot smaller. It's getting a lot less obtrusive, and it's blend, it's easier to blend in.
You can tell just by what the cell phones do.
Yes.
I mean, the cell phones are just... You know, you can do anything you want with them.
There's an ad somewhere on the, on the radios that say their cellphone does more than a rocket that went to the moon. Yeah, it's come a long way. So, we don't, we don't need much space, and obviously, the, the center will be the foundation for the hundred-foot monopine that we're building.
Now, is there any one else, any other cell company that's gonna be putting up dishes on there to run space on there, I should say?
We always promote co-location. This is not exclusive to Verizon. We will be, as the drawings depict, will be at elevation ninety-six, and then there conceivably could be three more carriers below us. So, anybody that wants to get on, we will lease up with them at a reasonable cost.
Now, is that the maximum, is four carriers on one?
That's the maximum out there right now. It's Verizon, Sprint, AT&amp;T, and T-Mobile. If you look around, I can't help but look at towers when I drive around, you won't see more than five separations of antennas, and each antenna is one carrier. They have to be separated by ten feet, so you could go down, add three more carriers to this.
Yeah, I know up north, I'm talking Coburg, Pittsburgh, up in that area, Canadian border, you'll see ten, twelve on a tower up there.
Oh, really?
They're quite, they're quite, well, there's nothing up there.
That would explain that.
Okay, I'm sorry to throw you off, but go ahead with number two.
Uh, number two, special exceptions under 2.2B, 2.21B3, the zoning board of adjustment may grant a special exception for the following use of lands within the residential district. Telecommunications towers, provided that it finds that the following are met, the applicant shall meet the criteria set forth in A, A through E, B1 above, which I previously read. The applicant must meet the criteria set forth in 2.02.4B22A for new towers. The proposed towers shall be disguised through the use of camouflage technologies such as trees, flagpoles, steeples, et cetera. And four, the written evidence demonstrating, written evidence demonstrating that no existing structure can accommodate the applicant's proposed antenna if the applicant is proposing to build a new tower. This evidence can consist in an analysis of location, height, strength, and potential interference with, would make, well, which would make co-location impractical. And then, three, this, our proposal complies with 2.02B422A. One, it states that towers shall be setback from the property lines by a distance equal to the height of the tower. However, the planning board may permit a lesser setback where an alternative protections to abutting properties are provided by way easement covenant or other adequate deed restriction, or where the proposed power, uh, tower is designed in full compliance with all applicable building codes and building construction plans submitted to the building inspector are certified and stamped by a licensed structural engineer prior to the issuance of a building permit. Prior to the issuance of a building permit, the tower design and plan shall be reviewed by a structural engineer designated by the town. Two, accessory facilities must satisfy the minimum zoning district setback requirements. Three, the tower shall maintain a neutral, non-reflective color so as to reduce visual obstru- obstruciveness. Four, for security purposes, towers and ancillary facilities shall be enclosed by a minimum of a six-foot fence. And five, all utility buildings and structures accessory to a tower shall be screened from view by suitable vegetation from any adjacent residentially zoned properties or public roads. Six, any proposed communications towers shall be designed structurally, electrically, and in all respects to accommodate both the applicant's antennas and comparable antennas for at least three additional users if the tower is over a hundred feet in height, or for at least one additional user if the tower is less than a hundred feet in height. Towers must be designed to allow for future rearrangement of antennas upon the tower and to accept mounts mounted at, and to accept antennas mounted at varying heights. And seven says twice yearly inspections and bonding are required. The structural integrity of all towers, whether in use, abandoned, or unused, shall be inspected at least twice a year. Copies of inspections and reports shall be filed with the community development department within thirty days of the inspection. All owners of commercial wireless telecommunications towers shall maintain, obtain and maintain a bond to cover the cost of removal of abandoned, unused towers or portions of towers. D, the amount of said bond shall be reviewed by the town every five years to ensure the amount of security is adequate and may be increased, increased if necessary. E, failure to file the required biannual inspection report with the community development department within the specified timeframe shall constitute sufficient grounds to cause bond to, to cause the bond to be called. And then, eight, permit required, all building permits shall be obtained on for all towers, accessory structures, and antenna. The number of users and the total number of antenna on any individual tower shall not exceed that which is permitted under the site plan approval by the Merrimack Planning Board.
Okay, if you just hold on a moment. Any questions, Rich? Okay, and number three?
I thought I did three.
I thought you...
Oh, yeah.
You got a lot of subdivisions in that, those.
Page four of the application form?
Yeah. Page four, number three.
Page four, number three.
Yep.
Proposed towers shall be disguised through the use of camouflage technologies such as trees, flagpoles, steeples, et cetera. And four, written evidence demonstrating that no existing structure can accommodate the applicant's proposed antenna if the applicant is proposing to build a new tower. This evidence can consist of an analysis of the location, height, strength, and potential interference, which would make co-location impractical, impractical. And I read those out of order, because my letter had them out of order, so I apologize for that.
That's fine. All right, any questions before we start the presentation? And I assume with that logo bouncing around on the screen, you have a presentation?
Yeah, we do have a, we do have a presentation. I just wanted to do a, a quick summary of some of the things that we talked about. As far as the, uh, the setback requirements, we will be, we will be going to the planning board to address a lesser setback than we have, but we have submitted a, a fall zone analysis letter from Hudson Design Group that talks about how monopines or monopoles are designed now. So, besides for going to the planning board, if you read this letter, in the end, under five and six, the, uh, the Derek Kreiser, a licensed professional engineer, basically reaches the conclusion that in the worst-case catastrophic, high tornado, crazy force winds, if this were to ever collapse, that it's designed to collapse on itself. So, in his opinion, a hundred-foot monopole, in that worst-case possible scenario, at which time there'll be no other houses standing around it, will be bent over fifty percent of the height. So, it will fall on itself to the, to the, to the max of fifty feet. The, um... One second, please. Um, the, the reason we need this part of town is that the current distances between existing sites, the topography of the land out there, and more importantly, the volume of traffic, and we mean mobile traffic, people using their variety of devices, we're not having enough capacity, coverage and capacity to the sections of Merrimack that are submitted, that are enumerated in our filings. Those areas are Babusak Lake, Babusak Lake Road, west of Everett Turnpike, which serves about ninety-seven hundred vehicles a day. Turkey Hill Road between Summit Road and Babusak Lake Road, which serves about eighty-six hundred vehicles a day, and Amherst Road, west of Cross Street, which serves approximately forty-two hundred vehicles a day. Mr. Valente is here, and he can address questions about the RF report. What I did want to show the board are the photo sims that were submitted, and we have a set here, so the public can see them, so if I can have a moment to show what it would look like.
Okay, one quick question before you start that now, is that if we approve that tower...
Sorry.
Does it have any benefit, say, to the north end of town?
Um, I'll, I'll let Keith Valente address that when he does his presentation.
Okay.
But a lot of, a lot of, my general answer to that is yes, because what putting this tower here does is offload congestion off other existing towers, which may help other parts of town, but he can address that in a second. All right, so this first picture is a depiction of the hundred-foot monopine. It's right here, in the center of the, of the picture, and this is, uh, the view from this angle. This is the general view of the site and the locations that we did the balloon testing. So, here's a view of the balloon as viewed from the southeast from Jessica Lane, and the next view shows a photoshopped-in monopine. So, the balloon and then photoshopped-in monopine. Monopines work great in this kind of setting, where the tower is within a natural forest setting. They don't work great in New Jersey next to the highway when they tower buildings, but this one works here. Another view here is from the southwest from Babusak Lake Road, and the, if I go here, oh, that helps me. So, the balloon is right there through the trees, and photoshopped-in is the monopine. So, basically, you can't see it when it's like that. The next location, three, is the view from the southwest from the intersection of Pilgrim Ave and Mayflower Road, and again, the balloon is right there in this box, and then when we put in the monopine, that's what it'll look like from a distance. The fourth location is a view from the northwest from the intersection of Jade Road and Turkey Hill Road. And I'm having trouble seeing the balloon, because it's not visible. I'm sorry. So, it's not visible from this angle, so we, you can't see the balloon, so we won't show you a, a photoshopped picture. Again, from the southeast from the intersection of Babusak Lake Road and Jessica Lane, again, the balloon is not visible, so the tower and the equipment will not be visible from this vantage point. And those are the ones I have to, to show the public and share with the board tonight. I did want to point out with some of the topics that I touched upon, as far as parking, the facility will not need any parking. It will not have traffic visiting the site at most. Once construction is completed, it'll have a maintenance truck visit, small pickup truck, once or twice a month, so it's not going to need any off-street parking. It will not require any municipal services. The tower will not be lighted. It's not required to be lighted, so there will be, be no blinking lights on it.
You won't put any Christmas lights up there?
We can't put any Christmas lights on there, because under the FAA rules, once you put up lights on a tower, they have to stay up. So, you'd have to have Christmas lights three hundred and sixty-five days a year, and that's why we generally tell towns, don't light it if you don't have to light it.
Right. No, I was just being comical. Thought it looked cute up there.
And, and that's pretty much what our presentation is. I do have my team here with me if the board has questions, specifically to the A&E firm, or the RF engineer, or Brian from Structured Consulting.
That's great. I have a few questions.
Thank you.
I don't know who took these pictures, but they're very helpful, very, very helpful in picturing exactly what this would look like if approved.
We do that a lot. That was, I believe that was done by Hudson Design Group as well.
Very good.
We generally pick a real calm day, clear day, no wind, and fly the balloon for two to three hours and drive around and look at it, and I've personally attended. They are very helpful, both for live viewing and after-the-fact viewing like tonight.
You've got a lot of angles in here that you haven't shown in your presentation.
Yeah, I, I did a limited for, for the public on the screen. I do have the...
Yeah, we've, we've got them all, I think. We've got a nice little packet.
You have more for the board, is correct. My switch. Would you like the others back?
No, I was just saying that, you know, you had more, but most of them don't show the balloon or the tower in them.
Right. Because of the location and the natural settings and the, and the tree coverage, and the water, water tank itself, it helps to camouflage it.
Right.
In addition to the, you know, the neutral gray coloring that we'll be painting, everything besides for the, for the monopine branches. And the ground will have an eight-foot fence. Six foot is required, but we'll put eight foot, and generally, we screen that too, to, with slats to come, to hide that and make it as camouflaged as possible.
Now, these, these here, are these other cell towers, or what are these here?
Yeah, if I can call Keith Valente up, he can do a quick presentation about...
Okay.
What, what these plots show.
Good evening. Keith Valente with C-Squared Systems, waving off at 65 Darma Drive in Auburn, New Hampshire. And I'm here on behalf of Verizon Wireless to discuss their, their network in the area, where it is today, what their needs are, and how the proposed site fills their needs, specifically within Merrimack. We prepared a report dated March 22nd that discusses just that, the RF needs for Verizon and how... This is the existing coverage for Verizon's 4G LTE network in the area. What this shows is, it encompasses the majority of Merrimack in the center of the map. Amherst is on the left, Bedford in the north, and you have Litchfield on the right side of the map. You have the Everett Turnpike in red, running north-south. The Merrimack River paralleling that on the right side of the map, and you have Route 101 cutting in the upper-left portion of the map. And then, again, the majority of the map is focused on central and northern Merrimack. Shown on this map are Verizon's, the locations of Verizon's existing facilities in the area. Those are shown by the sets of three pie-shaped wedges. The reason for that is most sites, including the proposed site, consist of three sectors of antennas that are directed generally one hundred and twenty degrees apart from each other. That allows them to cover, you know, three hundred and sixty degrees around each site. So to quickly run through them, there's a site labeled Amherst, that's atop Walnut Hill, that's a tree pole, similar to what's proposed here. In Bedford, that's, site labeled Bedford Southwest is a monopole, that's by the Irving Station, the Dunkin' Donuts, right off Route 101. Merrimack III in the upper-right portion of the map, that's across the street from Extra Space Storage, right off Everett Turnpike. The site labeled Litchfield, that's a Hidden Creek Golf Course. Merrimack VI is on Front Street. Merrimack II is right by Abel Ebenezer, that's also a, I believe it's a lattice tower. And then in the southern part of the map is Merrimack, that's right behind the outlets. And then in the center, in blue, is our proposed site, right off Turkey Hill Road. Also shown are these irregular coverage areas, and that's the existing coverage provided by those surrounding facilities. As you can see, the network's fairly well-built up and pretty solid along the Everett Turnpike, and up and down these real busy areas, and then also focused along Route 101. But what we have is a large gap in coverage that affects a large portion of central Merrimack and northern Merrimack, as well as surrounding towns in the area. So what the proposed facility is intended to do is expand coverage in towards central Merrimack and just fill out the network, from both a coverage standpoint, and it'll also alleviate some of the capacity issues that are experienced by these existing sites trying to serve, you know, as best they can, this area of Merrimack. So that's the existing snapshot of today. If I go to Attachment B, this shows what the proposed site would do in terms of, from a coverage standpoint. As you can see, it fills out a large portion of central Merrimack. It covers, let's see, in the report, I have two and a half miles on Babusak Lake Road, one point three miles on Turkey Hill Road, and one point seven miles on Amherst Road. In addition to that, it covers roughly four to five thousand additional residents within Merrimack, which equates to roughly fifteen to twenty percent of the overall population. So from that standpoint, it brings service to a large portion of the community. The next two maps kind of speak towards the capacity needs for this area. What we've done here is highlighted, as I mentioned, there are three sectors per site. What I've highlighted here in red is the area presently served by one sector of this Merrimack II site, that's the one by Abel Ebenezer. Simply because there are no other sites in Merrimack, it's, you know, it's doing it the best it can to serve those residents at a very low-level signal, so it's not going to be real reliable service at the outer fringe of that footprint. But the fact is, users that get on the network in that area are using resources from this Merrimack II site off in the distance. So what the proposed site would do is, if you look at the red area now, it'll shrink that red area, such that the Merrimack II facility can focus more of its resources on serving, you know, the area closer to that site, and along the Everett Turnpike and Route 3. And then Merrimack VII, it certainly offloads kind of that low-level fringe area where a lot of the population is, and it provides a dedicated site to serve that large number of the population in the area. So it's sort of a twofold need, both to improve coverage and also to support the growing demand for data usage in the area. And then the last map, this is just a 3D map of the topography in the area. The reason those coverage areas are so irregular is because they're more or less defined by the topography. You know, in southern New Hampshire, you have a lot of hills, a lot of valleys. That's going to kind of define what the sites cover, and why we need additional sites. So the proposed site, it's uniquely suited, it has advantageous ground elevation, it's right atop a nice little knoll in the center of town, so it allows it to provide coverage to all the residents, to the north, to the southeast, as well as along Amherst Road. So it's an advantageous site from a topographical standpoint as well. So that's a general overview of the report, and a discussion of the maps, and why the site's needed, but I'd be happy to answer any further questions. I think there was a question earlier about northern Merrimack.
Right.
So fortunately, if you can look, if I can just point you to the right side of the map, you can kind of see how the site density is today, and what the sites cover, simply because of that, you know, the varying topography in the area. If we go to the next Attachment B again, you can see it does fill out a large portion. There's not going to be one site that's going to fill out the remainder of town, it's going to require additional sites to do the job right. So this site is more intended for that central area of Merrimack. But again, if we go towards the end there, you can see you have these hills that are going to restrict coverage from getting, extending much further north. So that was the extent of my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
I have more questions on the tower itself. Can you answer that, or should someone else?
Probably someone else, but if you want to ask, and we can defer to the appropriate person.
Okay. I mean, it looks, it looks good. Doesn't look like a natural tree, but it does fit in. I mean, you don't see tops of trees lopped off like that. And I'm being honest. Now, my question is, what happens if those hurricane winds come in? Doesn't knock down the tower, but knocks off some of the limbs? Or something happens to the limbs that they become mangled, or somehow either damaged or destroyed? Do you go up there and replace those, so to keep the continuity of the tower, so it looks like a tree? Or are you just going to leave it blank, so it's going to look like somebody went up and chopped off a few limbs up there?
No, we would definitely repair and replace that. And if something that bad happened, the antennas are going to be damaged too, so we would repair it, both to fix the antennas and replace the green. But Verizon will maintain the branches on the monopine, and the fenced-in ground compound, maintain the slating, so they'll always maintain that. So if something comes off from a storm, we will repair it.
Well, the reason I'm asking is, you know, if we approve you, I don't want you coming in and saying, okay, we got this location, we're putting up the tower, and see you later, Merrimack, and just leave us be.
Yeah.
You know, I want something that is going to be kept up and look good.
I obviously work for Verizon, but having seen other carriers, Verizon is one of the leading companies that does everything by the book and stands behind their work, so they would absolutely not let it get in disrepair. They would maintain that throughout. And you have inspections in there too, built in, that would help for that, if there's any reason they didn't notice it.
Right.
No, absolutely would be repaired.
For the benefit of maybe some of the viewers who are watching in, you've shown a picture of the monopine, as you call it. Now, what's the difference between the lattice? Is that the bare tower, or?
No. A monopole is the monopine that you see without the branches. So, and then a lattice is the, like, metal-construction-type lattice tower, so.
That, it looks bare, and you know it's a cell tower when you look at it.
Yeah, you see those along interstates a lot. The ones that were built, you know, in the early days, twenty years ago, were the large lattice towers. Some of them had guide wires holding them down, too. Monopoles or monopines don't need that, because they're structurally, with the foundation and the way they're built, they don't have to have that lattice support or guide wires.
Now, one other question, I'm going to hand it over to the board, if they have any. I feel like I'm monopolizing it here. There is a, I believe, a concept picture, and there's four discs on it. Now, do those discs face north, south, east, and west, right around the pole? Now, do you know what I'm talking about?
Which phone were you?
I'm trying to find it here. It's just, it's a conceptual, it's like, just, it's in your package.
Is it in the zoning drawings, or the photo sims?
That's what I'm trying to find here, because I'm trying to picture if all the disc, you call them dishes or discs, or, I'm not sure what you call them.
Is this what you're looking at?
Yeah. Now, the four at the top, are they going to be facing in opposite directions, or?
So, so what we're showing there is, so what Verizon's proposing is twelve total antennas, so this is looking at one view of them, so there's one, two, three, four. So that's four per sector. As I described earlier, these sites have generally three sectors of antennas, so this would be one sector. So those are what we term panel antennas. The reason there's four of them is Verizon's licensed to operate it by the FCC at multiple frequency bands, and they support multiple services. So those are the antennas that Verizon employs to support that.
Okay, the antennas, now, it was one going to point north, one south, one east, one west, or they just, is that how it's going to look in between the branches?
Generally, those four will point in the same direction, and then the other four on the other side will point roughly one hundred and twenty degrees apart from that.
That, yeah, thank you. That was my question. Okay. Rich? No? Lenny?
A gentleman with a question would go to, if I'm scaling things properly, if the tower failed and toppled over tree style, it will still be on the village district's property?
Yes, with the exception of the sixteen feet, and I'm not sure if that's village district property, it's the easement. So if you count the easement, yes, it stays within the village property. There's no structures that it could possibly hit, but it stays there.
All right. Do you have anything further for your presentation?
Not at this time, unless some other questions. Come on up.
Okay, if you don't mind, I'm going to open the public hearing. And is there anyone here that would like to testify for this petition? For it, not against, but for it right now. For it, go ahead. And were you sworn in?
Yes.
Okay. Come on up, and sit down, and state your name, and would you sign in, please?
My name's Joe Perronello. I own forty-one Turkey Hill Road, and all three sides of the piece that the water tower is on, along with the right-of-way that goes down to it, the land that's under the right-of-way. And I just, I have questions about the ability to work the right-of-way into the construction of the tower itself, because there's no way they can really get all that stuff up there and get all of it back down without, you know, crossing into the land. And it's not that I'm opposed to it, I just want to make sure that they intend to work it out properly. And they talk about having bushes and shrubs around the fence. They don't have them in there for a reason right now, because that area between the tank and the fenced-in area is bare. So that would mean that whatever protection that they want to put around that fence would probably have to be on my property. And the idea of it falling, you know, I don't see that as much of a risk, but it would land on, it wouldn't all be on the water company's property, it would be on my property. But that doesn't really present that much of a problem, because that thing is taken away.
Now, is the tower more than fifty feet, or a hundred feet away from your property?
They're on it.
They're on it completely?
Well, the fence, the water company's parcel of land, that they said was one point nine acres of land, is one point oh two acres of land. So I don't know if that was just a typo that he read wrong, but they have a piece that's two hundred and nine by two hundred and eight, that the water tank itself is on, and that's a fenced-in section. And then, I can show you a map of it.
All right, can someone address this, please? If you'd just take the mic up there, if you don't mind standing.
One point oh oh two, which is one acre versus two acres.
So with respect to the acreage, we took it off the assessor's plat, that shows the two hundred and nine by two hundred and nine square, to be one point nine three six acres, so that's what the assessor's, that's what we went on.
We have a sale of nine, two hundred and eight by two hundred and eight is forty-three five sixty.
No, no, excuse me, don't address each other, okay? All right, you're going to, we're going to try and get this straightened out for you, okay?
Okay. So that appears to be an error on the record. So my office has actually been in touch with this landowner, and we will gladly work with him. Right now, from what it looks like, we get all our rights, because we're paying the water district rent to use this property, we get all our access rights from them. So they have a, currently a forty-foot right-of-way, which comes in to the water tank property, but not where the road is built. So where the current gate and road is, the secondary easement was done with this gentleman, and probably because, I'm going to guess, either it was cheaper to cut the road short, or they cut the road and then realized it, and they fixed it. So our choices are to put another gate and come in a little to the left of that, or deal with this landowner. And our preference is to deal with him and negotiate a fee for the easement, and that's what our plan is, and we will do that. That's aside from any approval you do. Your approval is just a special exception.
So you're willing to work with the landowner on the easement?
Absolutely, yeah.
On the right-of-way?
And then we will talk with Verizon about monetary consideration for getting the same easement the water district has for, I'll call that, square piece that's right in front of the current gate. So we will work with the landowner on that.
Okay, yes, ma'am?
I wasn't sworn in, so.
You were, oh. Raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Okay.
Okay. We have a difference of opinion.
Can you state your name, please?
Janice Perronello. I'm also the landowner here. And we have two deeds that were given to the town for the access road, and both deeds are for the six-hundred-foot road, and both of them are state for the water company only. They're limited access for repair and water drainage and pipes. The water company doesn't have a right to give someone else access to the road.
That's, that's not what he's saying at all.
I don't think that's what he was saying. He's saying that he would work with you guys.
He would work with the --
Yeah, he's talking about the top little piece. We own the whole access road. You really need to look at the map. The whole road to the water tower is our property. They only have a limited access to repair the water tank. They don't have an unlimited, like, they can't say, it's like, if I let you borrow my car, and then you meet your cousin and say, I'm going to let you take Joe's car, you know, it's the same thing. We had given them permission to use that road, that access road, which is six hundred feet. which is 600 feet, all the way from the beginning of Turkey Hill Road, all the way up the hill and all the way across onto our property. And our property is on three sides. I have the deeds with me that state the limited access.
All right, if you don't want. Did the MVD give you authority to use the access road? Or did it come from the property owners?
No, it comes from the water district. And I don't want to disagree because I'm in favor of working with them. But the water district, we do title searches because we're telling Verizon they have rights to get to this property by way of either an existing easement or a new easement. In this case, she's right. There are two easements that they granted to the water district. And I've read both. The first one's not restricted at all.
But the second?
The second one is restricted for the water company. And that's a square piece, about 50 by 50. It's where the gate is.
No, there's two of them. We have two deeds.
Wherever it is, we are willing to work with them and pay them so we don't have to do a road that hooks around further.
But it's not about the road.
Ma'am?
Whole road.
Ma'am?
Oh, please. But what I'm saying is, he's saying, and you can, if you look at this, you can see the piece he's talking about. But I'm not talking about that. This is a certified plot plan. If any of you would like to see it.
Why don't you just, if you hold on to it right now? Someone back there had their hand up. One of your people. I thought you did. No? Oh.
And again, we will work with the landowners. Our access is not part of the special exception. We have rights, some from the water company, what district, and whatever we don't have, we will get from the landowners here. And we will work with them, we'll negotiate a deal. But that's down the road. There's still, there's still plenty of work to do on this. Other boards, federal regulatory approvals.
So this is not something that's going to happen tonight, next week, next month, or within, say, the next three months or something like that? Maybe three months?
Probably with three months or so before we get to where we are and ready to.
Well, I would say that that would give you, between Verizon and the property owners, time to get together and work something out. And if you don't like it, then you tell Verizon exactly, you know, what you're looking for or you'd rather not have them coming on your property?
Also, there's the issue of the setbacks. Because I was told by someone that the tower that they're going to put in the base of it goes to the edge of the fence. So if you look at this plot plan, we're on three sides of it. So, I mean, the setbacks would have to be on three sides into our land. I think he said double the length of the tower, which is?
200 feet?
No, it's the height of the tower.
The height of the tower.
100 feet.
Yeah, the height of the tower, if you say.
Half the height of the tower.
But in terms of setbacks, the planning board has the purview to permit a lesser setback if they intend to meet the other criteria and ordinance. So that setback issue will come before the planning board.
So let me ask you this. Are you willing to work with Verizon? Let them go through the planning board and do whatever they have to and meet with you on the right-of-way?
Absolutely.
Yep.
It's in the general interest of the town.
Right, and I'm sure that Verizon will work with you as much as they can to accommodate what you want for your right-of-way, et cetera.
This plot plan is available at the town because it's registered, because it's a certified plot plan. But also, we have.
Well, I'm sure they'll probably be there tomorrow morning looking up everything, getting all the information they can. So I'm just trying to keep everyone happy. If you can work together, it's much better to work together than fight each other.
Yeah, but I'm wondering if their plans were based on a lot that was almost two acres versus one that's almost one acre.
But that's something they're going to go back and they're going to research it again, right?
Yeah, no, we're confident on what we're building on that size lot. I read the acreage from the assessor's plat. They've done the measurements. So what they're putting on that lot is right. There's no issues with the dimensions of the setbacks that we measured, et cetera. But we will gladly work with them on the access.
Julian, does community development have anything on the size of those lots or anything?
I'm sure we do. What he's saying is he took the acreage straight out of the assessor's database.
Right, and maybe we can compare the two to make sure that they agree?
Yeah, that's something that will have to be rectified with the assessor's database.
Is that agreeable? We'll check both assessing and community development to make sure that the amount of land, et cetera, both agrees. Is that agreeable to you?
Thank you. I just want to add one thing. Brian said that the water district owns 1.9 acres. And he believes this is one acre and there's .9 down the road on Turkey Hill. So that's why that, so I apologize for.
But they don't own that 1.9. We own it. It's on our plot plan.
Different parcel. Again, but as far as the lot itself, the measurements of what are proposing work on the 200 by 200 lot.
Verizon will do their homework. And I'm sure they'll contact you. And if there's something that you're not agreeable to, you can express it to community development or, you know, as long as you have proof, tangible proof, that they're wrong, you're right. Yep. So, I'm not going to ask if you're happy, but at least you're agreeable to it.
Yes.
Okay.
Are we all set?
Yep, you are. And thank you very much for your testimony.
Thank you.
Now, is there anyone else here who'd like to testify for or against the petition by Verizon for the monopine? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing.
Before we go any further, is there a possibility, Julian, that the assessor's database is incorrect?
I'd have to do some research in order to answer that question.
Well, that's why I've asked to have both of them check, compare their, what they have.
Well, I'm just, so I guess my question is, what I'm trying to figure out is, is there a condition that we can add to the deliberation so that it's contingent upon the information being accurate?
Think that's reasonable?
Okay. So?
Yes.
Just for the record, so we don't have to do that, we are in agreement that this parcel is one acre and the 1.9 is not accurate. And we, so if that helps, 200 by 200 is about an acre.
Okay.
All right. Rich, anything else? Lenny? Okay, can I hear a motion, please?
I'd like to make the motion to approve cell co-partnership doing business as Verizon Wireless and Merrimack Village District, special exception under Section 2.02.1B3 of the zoning ordinance to allow telecommunications tower with our residential district. The parcel is located off of Turkey Hill Road, Tax Map 5C, Lot 004, Case Number 2016-21. And I'd still feel comfortable making this contingent upon the assessor's database being accurate with the land. With community development, yeah.
We'd just like to double-check and make sure on that. And the conditions.
And then, of course, also that staff recommends the petitioner to obtain planning board site approval for the telecommunications tower use of the subject parcel.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
300.
Zero.
We all set? Okay, next item on the agenda is discussion of any possible action regarding other items of concern. And Julian, do you have anything?
Just an announcement that we expect confirmation of Tom Mahan as an alternate member at the May 26th Town Council meeting.
That's tomorrow night?
It's on. The expectation of confirmation of Tom Mahan as an alternate member at the May 26th Town Council meeting.
Yeah, and that's tomorrow night.
Tomorrow, yep.
Yeah. Excuse me. Excuse me.
Excuse me.
Thank you, Rich. Does anybody else have any discussion to bring up? Anything they want to talk about?
I do. One was, can I just confirm when the, when the June? I'm sorry, what I meant to say was July, when in July. Yes. Should have been 25th.
It's July 27.
I'm sorry.
July 27?
July 27, okay. All right. In that case, no interference there. I will be out the September, the September meeting, as I will be in surgery. So I just figured, a couple of months' notice.
Okay, but would you still drop community development and the chairman, just a quick email, say, in August to remind us?
Yes.
Thank you.
I will try to remember. I know, it's far out, but.
It is, yeah. Did you have something?
The June meeting is on the 29th. And I may be on vacation, and I don't know. So I'm just giving you a heads up. And I will definitely notify community development and the chairman of the board. Thank you.
You're very welcome. You know, at least give me a couple of days' notice.
I will.
Thank you. Okay, approval of minutes, any changes? Or motions?
There actually was one thing that, of course.
I make a motion, we accept the minutes of April 27, 2016, for discussion.
Do I hear a second?
Second for discussion.
Lenny Beachum. Rich?
Yeah, the, so, on, what page are we? Seven of nine, at the very bottom.
Okay, which line?
38, 39.
Okay, the board voted.
The board voted 401. Although Patrick did actually state that I seconded, I wasn't going to interrupt the process, but I was not the one who seconded at that particular meeting. Although I don't personally remember who did. So I haven't, I probably should have watched the video online to kind of figure that out. But that was an error because I don't know how important that is, but I actually wasn't the one that seconded that particular event.
Okay. All right, any other corrections?
No, that was it. I only thought about it because after the meeting, I remembered him saying that and going, ah, that actually wasn't me.
All right, could I have a motion, please, then?
So a move is?
We've had the motion.
That's right.
Okay, all in favor of the minutes with the correction? If we can find it. All in favor with the correction?
Aye.
Aye.
I abstain. 301.
Motion to adjourn, Madam Chairman?
Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
400.